Good evening, and welcome to the September 21st, 2023 meeting of the Longview City Council. The Honorable Ray Wade will take his seat, and we will begin.
It's either I'm late coming in, or I'm late getting to you.
What? What? I've lost control, it just started. Wow. Okay. Tonight, our prayer and pledge will be led by Kevin Pineta, a bilingual parent educator for the project HOPE with Buckner Children and Family Services. Earlier this week, Kevin also led a bilingual storyline at the library as part of Hispanic Heritage Month. Kevin will pray in English and Spanish, and then lead the pledge in English. Thank you, sir. Please rise.
Let's pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you, Lord, for this day, we thank you, Lord, for this city. We acknowledge, and we come before you with humble hearts, acknowledging that you are sovereign over all the nations, dear God, and we just pray for unity, for guidance, give our leaders wisdom, and help us to work together to better this city and lead us towards the path of righteousness in your name. Señores de Cristo, damos gracias señor por este día. Te pedimos señor con humildad, reconociendo que tú eres soberano sobre todas las naciones. Que nos guíes señor, dele a estos líderes sabiduría que viene de ti, y guíanos a saber a través del paso de justicia señor. Gracias por todo, te pedimos en el nombre de Jesús. And everyone says, amen. And now the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir. We appreciate you very much and for what you do for Buckner. We're now to citizen comment, and you don't have any speaker cards to speak during citizen comment portion. I do have one for the zoning issue, we'll come to that in a minute. We do have an employee recognition tonight. I'd like to recognize Chris Cummings. Chris Cummings is a dedicated lead utility plant operator who continually puts pride into the fact that he ensures safe drinking water for approximately 100,000 people, including himself. During his tenure with the city, he has worked at all three water treatment plants and is the distribution, and in the distribution system. He constantly searches for ways to improve himself, his coworkers, our water plants, and ultimately, our drinking water. Chris has a Bachelor of Science in Agricultural Business from Stephen F. Austin and holds the highest of water licenses, the Class A Water Operator, issued by the Texas Commission on Environmental Quality. He is active in the Texas Water Utilities Association, TWUA. Because of his knowledge, commitment, experience, and excellence, he was nominated for and awarded the TWUA Operator of the Year for a system of 60,000-plus population. This is the second time he's been nominated and awarded this award, and with the first time being in 2008. This award recognizes individuals for their service to the utility, to their community, to the profession as a whole, and to the goals of the water and wastewater community. Chris's consistent high performance and dedication over multiple decades is a solid testament to his abilities and knowledge as a lead utility plant operator for the city of Longview. Please come up, give a round of applause for Chris Cummings. Come forward, Chris. Come on up, buddy. Congratulations, thank you, sir. And this is for you, the award you received. You know, we don't get to recognize people like Chris very often, because if he was sitting here, no one would know where Chris is or where Chris worked, except those that work with him, because he's a behind-the-scenes guy that makes it good for every single one of us in this room, in this community, and the surrounding area to go and have a glass of water anytime you want to. And we are always ready with the highest of quality water in the state. We get awards every year, and that's because of people like you, Chris. We appreciate your service, your dedication, your time spent to get to where you are, and thanks for being a lumberjack, ax some jacks, man. Everything good comes from SFA. That's my alma mater, man. That's where I went to school. Yeah. So, thank you very much, we appreciate you, keep up the good work, and keep inspiring those around you to be as good as you are, okay? Thank you, buddy.
Sir.
Hold on, shoot a picture real quick. Come on back down. Man, we should go down along. All good. Thank you, sir. Keep up the good work. Oh, actually, just stay up there. Okay. We have two presentations. The first is a proclamation recognizing October 3rd as Longview National Night Out. Read this first, then we'll come up. National Night Out, October 3rd, 2023. Whereas National Night Out began in 1984 as a unique crime, drug, and violence prevention program with participation in more than 17,000 communities from all 50 states, U.S. territories, and military bases worldwide, and was celebrated in the city of Longview, Texas on October 3rd, 2023. Whereas, the annual National Night Out provides an opportunity for Longview and Gregg County citizens to participate in local gatherings and recognize the impact that their participation can have on reducing crime, drugs, and violence in our community. Police, community partnerships, and neighborhood safety cooperations are important themes of the National Night Out program. So now therefore, Andy Mack, for the authority vested me as mayor of the city of Longview, do proclaim October 3rd, 2023 as National Night Out in the city of Longview. Who's coming forward on this one? A bunch of you, I guess. Come on. Come on up, guys.
Y'all got a new father in the mix.
Yeah, I like this group.
What is this?
There you go. Okay, so, if you all have not participated in the National Night Out Neighborhood Party, you're missing out. Number one, just the fellowship of being with your neighbors and getting to know each other. But number two, having all these people that serve and protect us every single day come out and enjoy time with you and get to interact with you on a personal basis, it's really pretty awesome. And I promise you, they try to hit every one of them. It's a great night, it's a great time, but it does more than anything is it promotes the fact that we as citizens and our police department are working hand-in-hand to deter crime. And that's a huge part in playing in our crime prevention. So, you know, it's ultimately important that we do this. I appreciate all of you all for taking the time, Chief Boone, all you guys that really stress this, and there's a lot of work that goes into it, but the dividends pay huge benefits for our citizens. So, thank you all, every single one of you on these uniforms, we thank you. But thank you for being here tonight, and just know that we do appreciate you, and keep up the good work. Y'all are awesome. Great job. Thank you all very much. Our next presentation is a proclamation regarding Gregg County Master Gardeners' Day, October 11th, 2023. Whereas, a 25th Jubilee Anniversary Committee has requested the mayor by proclamation recognize October 11th, 2023 as Gregg County Master Gardeners' Day in the city of Longview. Gregg County Master Gardeners Association gathers to celebrate their 25th anniversary. Not only do members complete many hours of instruction in horticulture, they also volunteer hours of service for our community. Gregg County Master Gardeners devote time to the New Gate Mission, JR Curtis Garden for the Blind, the First Baptist Community Garden, and various other events throughout the year to help educate and bring together our community members in their craft. So now therefore, Andy Mack, the authority vested me as mayor of the city of Longview, proclaim October 11th, 2023 as Gregg County Master Gardeners' Day in the city of Longview. Coming forward, this will be Shaniqua Davis, Gregg County Extension Agent, and Rita Buckley, Gregg County Master Gardener President. Come on up. How are you? Good to see you. How are you? Hey, thank you all so much, this is for y'all. You know, this is pretty cool. I don't know how many of y'all have participated in any of the events we talked about. You know, if you haven't gone and seen the JR Curtis Garden, the things we talked about, they're spectacular. It's a fantastic place to go and just feel good. And you know, we need that. We need to have a place where we can go and just feel good. And it's because of you all and what you do, your organization, it means a ton to our city. Keep up the good work. It's just a great thing that we had, everybody else just doesn't have this kind of thing, and we do. So, I'm really proud of that, and I hope this continues, and y'all keep up the good work. Thank you so much. Y'all are awesome. Y'all make Longview look good. Keep it up. We are now to 2018 Bond Project Update. Mr. Archer.
Mayor, members of the council, Mr. McPhee, good evening. I'm blessed to have this opportunity to go over the 2018 bond propositions with you. In 2018, the voters approved three bond propositions. Proposition A is for public safety facilities in the amount of $52,410,000. Proposition B was for streets and infrastructure in the amount of $27,90,000. And Proposition C was parks in the amount of $24,710,000. So, all three of the bond propositions was $104,210,000. So, the city manages all of its propositions, all of its projects by proposition. We've had a couple of challenges since 2018, and I want to kind of go over those real quick. So, as you know, we had a pandemic that happened in there, and not only did we have the pandemic, but we've had some economy issues, we've had increases in prices, and we've also seen supply chain issues. So, let me go over Proposition A. This is several projects that make up our public safety operations improvements. The first is the new police building that's going, being constructed very near where we're at right now. We show this project to be at about 95% complete, with the substantial completion happening this fall. Fire Station 5, this included a large addition that we added, plus a remodel of the existing facility, and that project's complete. I think many of y'all were there when they had the hose uncoupling. Station 8 is being constructed off of George Ritchie on Lew Galacy Way. That project's approximately 75% complete, and we expect to complete it this winter. Fire Station 7, this is going to be a complete rebuild of that facility on the existing property. We expect to get started with that construction in the summer of '24 and be completed in the summer of '25. The fire and police training facility is located off Eastman Road near Van Street. The new tower is in place, it's shown here at the bottom left-hand corner. The flat work that will complete the Phase 1 of this training facility, that will be, we bid it out, they'll start construction here in the winter, and we expect that to complete in '25, in spring of '25. The renovations to the existing police facility, that's still in design. We expect construction to get started in the summer of '24, and again, summer of '25 completion on that one. So, that kind of covers Proposition A, and let me just say, our team has done an amazing job dealing with these things, especially dealing with those issues that I talked about a little bit earlier. With our estimates of the projects that we haven't completed, we're showing an approximate overage of 2.6% for the proposition, but like I say, this includes some estimates that we don't have back yet, so that's just our estimate of where we're at. Let me go into the street bond projects. This is streets and infrastructure projects. Marbly Complete Street is in design, and we're acquiring, we've got a little bit of right-of-way that we need to acquire there. This reconfigures that five-lane road to include sidewalks and a bike lane with some landscaping that makes separation there. We've also received a grant in the amount of $2.8 million for the completion of this project. Cotton Street Scape, it'll run from Green Street to Maude Cobb. The existing street will be improved behind the curb, that includes landscaping, sidewalk, lighting, and a streetscape that'll match downtown. We're currently in design, and some of the right-of-way will need to be acquired. We've applied for a grant, it's a substantial grant, and we have not received approval on that grant yet. Fairmont Street, this project reconstructed the road, adding sidewalks to both sides of the road. We did some drainage work, we did some landscaping work. They are very near completion, we should be bringing it to council here real soon. There's just a couple of small items, we want that contractor to finish up before we move there. Real Road Widening, this will widen an existing two-lane asphalt road to a four-lane concrete road. Shared bike lanes and sidewalks will be on one side of that that'll run from Nob Crest to Pine Tree Road. We're currently in design, and we've got just like two right-of-ways that we need to take care of, but we're right there on that. The Marbly and High Entry Project, that reconfigures that intersection there at Estes and Marbly and High where it did that kind of weird connection, it reconfigured that, and then we were able to take Millie Street and bring it on to Marbly, so it increased the mobility to that neighborhood there. Entryway monuments and landscaping and lighting have been installed at the intersection. There's a couple of items left to complete this project, but that, again, that's a supply chain issue, so we're just kind of waiting to get those, it's really the signs we're waiting for at this point. So, with our estimates of projects left to be completed and our anticipation of receiving that grant, we are well below budget. If we do not receive the grant, we'll be at about 6% above the proposition. Again, this includes estimates, so at this point, those are all subject to change. Now, let me go into the Parks Bond Projects. Let's start with Lear Park. Lear Park completed Phase 5 of the Lear Park Master Plan. This project included improvements to the Jackman Splash Pad, there was two softball fields, two baseball fields, two soccer fields were converted to astroturf, and some lighting was installed. And this project's complete, and with this project being completed, the master plan is now complete for Lear Park. The Parks Improvement Phase 1 included Lois Jackson, McWhorter East, Patterson, Spring Creek, Stamper, and Womack Parks. This phase of the Parks Improvement is complete. Phase 2 includes Rollins, Spring Hill, and McWhorter West, and this project's currently in design. We expect to start construction in the summer of '24, and we'll have a public meeting on McWhorter West probably within the next month. Rotten Recreation Center and the Park Project included the renovation of the current recreation center and the construction of additional gymnasium and some additional parking. We updated and extended the trail there and rehabbed the basketball court. That project's complete, and it's a fantastic facility. Cargill Trail was resurfaced, and the project is complete. That resurfacing went well. The Arboretum included two phases. Phase 1 included landscaping, lighting, stream improvements, bathroom, and fencing. That phase is complete. Phase 2 included the pergola parking, entry kiosks, and additional lighting, and that part is also complete, so Arboretum is complete as a whole. So, with our estimates of this Phase 2 Parks Improvement that was left to be done, we expect this proposition to be within 1% of the budget when it's completed. And with that, I'd be glad to answer any questions that you may have.
Any question, Mr. Archer, at this time? Dwayne, I just want to say, fantastic job, you know, a bond of this magnitude, sometimes things just get lost, but there has been nothing lost in this bond project, and I really appreciate that. When we went to the citizen for the bond and they voted on it, our job was to make sure that they got what they voted for, and they're getting exactly what they voted for, and that's a testament to you and the staff. Thank you very much for making that happen for council and for the citizens of Longview. Great job.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. We're now to consent agenda, any items council might pull off for separate discussion?
Just a quick question on O.
Quick question on what?
O.
On O? Any other questions? Okay, Ms. Gamboa, question on O?
Just for clarification, these are the shade structures over the baseball fields. Okay, thank you. Woo-hoo, that's a big one.
Okay, if there's no questions, is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion of second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Now to zoning. Public hearing held to consider application S-2309. Ms. Choi.
Thank you, Mayor Mack, members of council, Mr. McPhee. The applicant is requesting a specific use permit to allow for a single-family dwelling in heavy commercial zoning district located at 5911 Old Highway 80. A specific use permit is required for single-family dwellings in this zoning district to ensure no negative impact on surrounding properties. There is currently single-family dwellings located to the east and west of this property, and the applicant would like to build a single-family dwelling on this site. Planning and Zoning Commission, along with staff, recommends approval of this request. I'd be happy to answer any questions at this time.
This requires a public hearing, which is now open. I have a speaker card for Ms. Theresa May for questions, any questions of Ms. May or of Ms. Choi? If not, public hearing is now closed. Is there a motion?
Make a motion.
Second.
We have a motion of second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Public hearing held to consider application Z-23-20. Ms. Choi.
Thank you. The applicant is requesting to rezone from agricultural zoning district to office zoning district for property located at the northeast corner of Hawkins Parkway and Bill Owens Parkway. Both of these roads are classified as minor arterial roadways, and both are maintained by the city of Longview. This type of development is appropriate along these roadways as long as access management is followed. Planning and Zoning Commission, along with staff, recommends approval of this request. I'd be happy to answer any questions at this time.
This requires a public hearing as well. The public hearing is now open. Any questions, Ms. Choi? No questions, public hearing is now closed. Is there a motion?
Just move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion of second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Public hearing held to consider application Z-23-21. Ms. Choi.
Thank you. The applicant is requesting to rezone from general retail zoning district to townhome zoning district for all of Block 7, Valley View subdivision located at 1601 Alpine Road. This block is where the old Valley View school is. The applicant is proposing to demolish this building and build a townhome development. Valley View Drive and Ben Street are both classified as local streets and are maintained by the city of Longview. Alpine Road is classified as a minor arterial and is maintained by text dot. This type of development is appropriate along all of these roadways as long as access management is followed. Planning and Zoning Commission, along with staff, recommends approval of this request. I'd be happy to answer any questions at this time.
This requires a public hearing, which is now open. Any questions, Ms. Choi? Public hearing is now closed. Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion of second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Choi. We now have an action item considered in ordinance, meaning Article 7 of Chapter 4 of the Longview City Code to expand memberships to Comprehensive Planning Advisory Committee, Ms. Gamboa and Mr. Newstead. The floor is yours.
Well, thank you, everybody, for allowing us to go over this. So, as you know, Mr. Newstead and I are both part of the Appointments Committee, and I'm the Comprehensive Plan Liaison. The last time the Comprehensive Plan had 12 members was in 2019, but I'm a firm believer that two is better than one, simply because although two constituents may live in the same district, they all have varying backgrounds, experiences and such, and schedules. And because this is a very important plan that is going to dictate our future for the next 15 to 20 years, we thought it prudent and important for there to be a second member for each district so that in the case one can't attend a meeting or something, they can work together and, you know, do what's best for Longview in that regard. So, the reason we put under action item was to kind of explain that reasoning, and so with that, anybody have any questions?
Mr. Newstead, anything to add?
Nope, she covered it. Tell Michelle.
Well, I think that this is a step forward. We, when this committee was originally formed, we had two from each district, and then when that committee completed their task, we cut it back to one because there was no need to have that many people meeting when there wasn't a lot going on, and then we have ramped this back up again, so I think the idea of bringing it back to two is very appropriate. And so, I think that would be good for council to deliberate and determine what they would like to see representing the districts. You know, I don't want to appoint anyone to this committee, but I wouldn't be opposed to adding a name or two if that was a possibility. So, just to think about it. I don't need to, but if we need to, because, and I say that out of, we don't always have enough attendance to get something done, and so sometimes we might need to consider the, or, really better than that, I don't really care to put anyone on there because it doesn't represent a district. It would add a person to the district that doesn't fit in a district, and if I put anyone on, I would not want them to be in a district to add three to a district. That wouldn't be the point. But what we might consider, as you all are on this committee, and the committee meets, is an attendance requirement. If you put someone on the committee and they don't attend, they need to replace them, because it is an important position to be in, and it's a council-appointed position, and we need people to agree to do it and then do it, not just to say I do it in name, because that doesn't help us at all when we try to get something done and we don't have enough input to make that work, then we've wasted staff time and the time of the other people that have attended the meeting as well. So, carefully deliberate that when you think of an appointment, and talk to your potential appointee and make sure they're committed to this. Otherwise, it's just a, this isn't a figurehead committee. This is a committee that has a lot of influence and input into our community, so think about that, council. Thank you all for bringing that forward.
Any of those meetings ever been, have you ever been able to attend some of those virtually? I know we did a lot of that during COVID, but have we been able to extend that past COVID?
Yes, councilmen. So, the last meeting, someone from my district, Melissa Beckett, actually was able to Face Conference, FaceTime Conference in, and she was able to not only listen in, but also deliberate.
Sure. So, I think with some of the things that the mayor is requesting, that those meetings are, it's mandatory that you attend those? Maybe if there's a way that we can open those up to where you can kind of tune in virtually would help as well.
Yeah, I think we wouldn't be opposed to that, but I think one thing we've all learned, or at least have learned from the COVID era, is that although it is helpful and efficient to do Conference in for things this big, I think it's almost preferential to show up in person, and then in the case that there were an emergency or something to, you know, Conference in.
All right, what you're talking about, other people?
No, 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 no.
Watching or just the people that actually?
Just the board members.
The board members, okay.
Yes.
And just so y'all know, I think one approach that Mr. Newstead and I are taking with the Appointments Committee is that we are looking at people who don't meet the 75% requirement of attendance, and we are sending them thank you for your service letters and replacing them.
Very well, is there a motion?
I'd move to approve.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you all. We're now to as a community interest, can we have a motion to, excuse Mr. Carpenter, please?
I'd make a motion.
Second.
We have a motion of second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, Ms. Snodding, you're up.
Nothing for me tonight, ma'am.
What? What?
Me, okay. You want me to say something? Good evening, everyone. No, honestly, I would like to congratulate Officer Brown on the birth of his lovely daughter. We want to make sure we keep his family in prayer, but he's a proud dad, so if you see him smiling a lot, it's not because he's so happy about the job or what he's doing, it's about his newborn daughter. So, I just want to say congratulations.
Absolutely. Mr. Wade?
I'll take that, and I have nothing to.
What?
Mr. Newstead.
Awesome. So, we have the Great Pumpkin Roll coming up on Saturday, October 7th. 326 is downtown Longview, and I believe it's the same location, the roll of where Meth Bin said that it's a Longview. And it was great. We attended, last year my kids were, and I were able to be judges, and it was a lot of fun, and highly recommend you do it. It's amazing how far pumpkins roll. The first time, like I, when we get there and we're judging, I thought it was going to go maybe like, you know, 50 feet maybe at the best, and so we started there, and it was slowly we got down blocks, you know, and it was very impressive. So, definitely come out, great, great family fun event, and so hope to see you there. And then also, I have my first District 4 Town Hall meeting, thank you, so save any roasting for that, and I want to invite y'all to come out and help, be there to help shape support and provide input on the direction and of the future of Longview and the community. So, appreciate it. There you go.
Ms. Gamboa.
I'm sorry, y'all always have a lot, but...
If you would've said I have nothing out of...
You heard a backflip.
Well, Happy Hispanic Heritage Month, and thank you to the Helping Hands Network for allowing me to kick off your first Hispanic Heritage Fest in Tyler. It's always good when we can work regionally and show Tyler Longview love. October 19th, Too Close to Home, a very serious issue that affects us all is uniting against human trafficking, so if you can, please make sure to register for this very important conference on October 19th, Too Close to Home, being put on by the Women's Center of East...
19th, Too Close to Home, being put on by the Women's Center of East Texas. Thank you so much to Hannah House as well for what they do in the lives of women through hope and love, and thank you to Pat Green as well for supporting the mission of Hannah House and being out here, and thank you as well for letting me kick off your festivities this weekend. More than just me embracing diversity with Isaiah, I met this sweet young man at the fairgrounds, and just a friendly reminder to please go inside the exhibit center and go see all of the vendors. You'll never know who you'll get to run into, and this young man and his mom are making a huge difference in our community to make sure that everyone feels embraced. Congratulations to Ms. Glade Water, Hadassah Balcorta, on being Miss Gregg County. As you know, pageantry has a special place in my heart, and we're just so thankful that you're going to represent Gregg County well. On that same note, on a point of personal privilege, I did win first runner-up in the Miss United States of America pageant, and I was named Miss Southwest, so now I'll be competing next July in Nationals for Miss United States of America. And thank you to the council for these flowers and mayor. And Pilot Club, thank you for what you do to bring awareness to brain injuries and issues. So they requested if you please go on their Facebook page, they need a lot of members, board members, and people who are willing to attend their events, and brain injuries affect us all, so please make sure that you look up the Pilot Club of Longview. Shout out to Dwayne Archer and Kim Wallace for doing a drive-around with all of District 5. They went around every single road with me, they wrote down notes on every piece of litter that there was, every pothole and priorities. So thank you all so much for spending the day with me and riding around District 5. And congratulations, aloha, yee-haw, and big kahuna on your, the way that you performed at the United Way Cardboard Races. And as I polled everybody, the favorite part of participating in this was, they said, building the boat. So as you see, there is some picture evidence of them hard at work building those boats. So thank you, guys, for representing the city well. Nothing else. Thank you.
Mr. Pirtle.
Nothing for me.
We're going to take a 10-minute recess now. We will finish, we will come back in a minute.
That's what happens when we meet once a month.
We need to regroup here. Mr. McPhee.
I have nothing.
Okay, well, Walk of Honor. Join us this Sunday, September 24th, at 2:00 PM at Heritage Plaza for the inaugural Walk, the Longview Walk of Honor celebration to recognize the significant efforts of Robert and Pauline Cargill, Carl Estes, RG and Evelyn Laterno, Neil McCoy, Dr. Isaac E. Willis, Jr. This is really special for me. This is an idea that a friend of mine, Tim Patrick, and I came up with, and we have been put on hold during COVID, and we have now gotten this back on track, and I'm really happy to see this coming to fruition. I think it's going to be a really neat thing for Longview to have something like this in our streets so that people can recognize people that have made a difference in our community. And obviously, everyone on this list has made an incredible impact into our area, into Longview. So congratulations to the recipients and to the group that has put this together and seen this forward. I really appreciate that, because I think it means a lot for our community to be able to recognize each other and celebrate that with each other. So thank you very much, Tim, and all your committee that has brought this out. National Night Out will be held Tuesday, October 3rd. There's still time to register your neighborhood party. To learn more or find a party near you, visit longviewtexas.gov/NNO. The 9/11 Cup. As you may remember, the past few times that Longview Police and Fire have competed, Fire has been victorious. But I told Chief Boone not to come back without a victory. Well, there's no public safety update today. I wonder how that happened, Chief Steelman? How did that come about? I don't know. So I'm happy to say that Chief Boone followed my instructions. The Longview Police have taken home the 9/11 Cup during the annual September 11th Golf Tournament. So here it is, right here. Chief Steelman, would you come get this and hand it off to me, please? I'm going to put it right here so we can all look at that, that Police actually won. Way to go, Police. All right, Chief Steelman, now the onus is back on you again, okay? All in good fun, and I think, I really do appreciate our Police and Fire, how they get along, how they, they, number one, take care of all of us, but they do it in such a great way, and it's so nice to see departments such as this with all professionals who can get together, enjoy, relax, compete, and then laugh about it, and that's what makes it so special. Thank you all very much for your participation, all the things that you do, guys. It means a lot to us all. Okay, water bill scams. The Longview Police Department recently shared on social media that local hotels